It is now six thirty, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one School Committee Meeting. In keeping with an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. Signed into law by Governor Baker on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attend us by board.
Recording in progress.
Attend us by board members shall count towards quorum. The meeting will be broadcast live on Facebook and recorded on ECAF. This meeting is open to the public and we'll take questions by the chat feature at the bottom of your screen. Please make sure to include your full name and address and we'll do our best to answer all questions. However, we will not read questions that have already been answered. Great, welcome everyone. First on the agenda is the minutes from the September first, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting. Questions, comments, edits? You are a quiet group. All right, can I get a motion?
Sorry, I just have a very tiny edit on the September first minutes. It's a very little typo. Under discussion of COVID protocols and possible vote, line seven, it says. Starts with Teresa Skinner. I think it, I think it's supposed to be provided feedback. I think there was just a slight typo in there, so I think it's Teresa Skinner provided feedback.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Any others? All right. Can I get a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of September first, two thousand twenty-one with the edit as mentioned?
So move DeLuca.
Can I get a second?
O'Neil second.
All right, roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wasman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, next up are the regular meeting minutes. September ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Questions, comments, edits? Caroline?
Sorry, me again. So under the section that says presentation of Girl Scout Silver Badge, which Michelle, as you pointed out, probably should have read Silver Award, which we did. Lines ten and eleven, at least in our copy. But it begins with Ms. Peliquin and Ms. Calisi presented their Girl Scout Silver Award project. So there are three places in those two lines, lines ten and eleven, where I believe it should read feminine products or product. Do you see where I'm, where I am? There are three usages referring to the products that we were discussing. And I think that it's supposed to read feminine products or feminine products, product.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, does to me. All right, any other edits? All right, can I get a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from September ninth, two thousand twenty-one with the edits mentioned?
Star, so moved.
Can I get a second?
Wasman, second.
Roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wasman, yeah.
Star, yes.
Excellent. All right, next is the executive meeting minutes from September ninth, two thousand twenty-one. Does anyone want me to hold them for comments at a later date? All right, can I get a motion to accept the executive meeting minutes from September ninth, two thousand twenty-one?
O'Neil, so moved.
Can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
Roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wasman, yes.
Star, yes.
Great, thank you. All right, personnel change, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you, we do have a retirement this evening. We have a teacher at Oliver Ames High School. John Johansson is currently an English teacher there. He started as a long-term sub in two thousand six and in September, in January of two thousand six. And then in September of the next year, he was hired as a grade nine English teacher for what was then the English Junior High School. He has been with the district for fifteen years and he plans to retire this December thirty-first after long service. Unfortunately, he's not able to join us tonight, but again, another well-loved teacher, very experienced. I believe you have his letter to read. Another great loss for the district, certainly. We wish him very, very well in his, his well-deserved retirement. He was a pleasure to work with, still is a pleasure to work with until the end of the, the calendar year, but we, we wish him very, very well.
All right, Dr. Cabral, I, John Johansson, am officially retiring from Eastern Public Schools as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Please accept this letter as my formal resignation, John Johansson. Johansson, my apologies. Any comments, Nancy?
John Johansson is an awesome guy. He was at the middle school when I was there. Just a great guy, easygoing, kids love him. He really, you know, motivates them to do their best. And I wish him the best in retirement because he's going to enjoy it very much.
Anyone else? All right, may I get a motion to accept the resignation of John Johansson with regrets?
So moved, DeLuca.
Can I get a second?
Star, second, with regret.
Roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wasman, yes.
Star, yes.
Great, thank you, enjoy your retirement. All right. October first enrollment, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. So in your packets, you have the record of our October first enrollment. We do this every year. This is, October first is significant in school systems because it is the number that the Department of Education uses for. Accounting for the cost reimbursement for students in our district. So it's tied to our financial, it's tied to our financials. So it is a, a very big and important number for us. One that I will remind you is, is traditionally small is pre-K. Not only because we don't have a full or free program in Eastern right now, but because pre- kindergarten is for students to age into. They can begin pre-K when they're three years old and obviously children turn three every month of the year. So they literally, unlike other grades, can enroll into the preschool program. And we usually see the numbers essentially double by the end of the year, once all the students are in place. So there's not a lot to discuss. We were down one hundred and seventy-three students last year. That was not a huge shock to us because of COVID. You can see, for example, I try to, to guide you always to look down vertically into the left when you're looking at numbers. So FY twenty is in the far right column, twenty-one's in the center, FY twenty-two is in the left. So for example, you can not only check longitudinally the, the grade, but you can check the cohort. If you, if you look down on a diagonal. So you will see that while we went from a hundred and forty-seven students in kindergarten. Last year, we have two hundred and twenty-four this year. But if you follow the same cohort of a hundred and forty-seven kindergarten students, that's up to two hundred and thirteen students in, in grade one. So we did get a huge chunk of those students back. Again, that, it was not surprising, kindergarten isn't currently compulsory. And so many parents decided a variety of things for their children in the, in the last year, which was a very unusual year. Either deciding to keep them home, to homeschool them for kindergarten, to send them to a private kindergarten or daycare. So there was, that's probably, that is the biggest variability. The only other thing I would know is that we're actually losing less students than sort of has been our trajectory in the past. From the middle school to the high school. And I would contribute that to a few things. We're certainly expanding our programming there. We have a lot more that we have in the pipeline to be offering. And we have also instituted recently our open house program, which for eighth graders, which it's been kind of surprising to see that. There are, there really are a lot of people who have gone through the Eastern Public School system, but maybe aren't completely aware of what's available at Oliver Ames. And, and when they see that, we've actually retained a lot of students who've reported that that was really an eye, eye opening for them. Especially if they're the first in the family, they don't have a sibling that went there. We kind of think they know what has happened, but being able to show them the programs, the activities, the clubs. Proudly displayed by their, the, the peers in the school, the students. This year, we are running it. We're trying to organize it for an outdoor venue, but it is coming up. And so watch for that. If you have a middle school student, they don't have to be just an eighth grade. The eighth graders will come over during the school day as part of their school day. But parents are invited after school and certainly even if you have a seventh grader or even a sixth grader. If you'd like to see what we offer, you're more than welcome to attend that. So you can contact the high school if you're looking for more information about that. We also, the last thing I would point out is our out-of-district placements. They've been very consistent over the last three years and this, they do represent a decrease. To what we had as outplaced students in the last ten years, for example. And of course, we contribute that, we attribute that to the robust programming that we've put in place in our buildings. Now every school has every program. We added them each year and depending on need. And this year, we have them running in all schools. So that would be the Therapeutic Learning Center, the Foundations Program and the Skills. Or in the pre-K to two schools, Developmental Skills Program and the High Schools to Transitions Program. So we have been extremely fortunate to keep our kiddos right here with us to get what we believe is better programming. Than some of the outplacements that they may have been sent to in the past. They are educated with their peers, in their homeschool, in their neighborhoods, and we think it's just a far better programming for them. And then it represents a financial savings as well ultimately. But really, it's, it's more of a, an educational and ethical service that we feel is very important to include. Be fully inclusive of all our students regardless of their learning style or need. So those are the things that I would just point out. If, if you have any questions, certainly I can address those. Nancy?
Nancy?
Yeah, I see it says homeschooling with IEPs. Do we have a number on how many kids in Eastern are homeschooled or we don't? That's not in our realm.
No, it is very much in our role, in our realm. Actually Chrissy is in charge of that. We have a very, we've always, ever since I've been here, we've had a very robust program. And an excellent relationship with homeschool parents. We provide them as much service and supports as we can. They actually have to have a plan in order to be considered a public, excuse me. So in sort, in order to be considered educated in a program from D E S I. We actually have to approve their program for their child, the materials they use and then their progress report at the end of the year. So that was my, when I was Assistant Superintendent, that was my role. Now it's Chrissy. And we've always had a great relationship with those families. We've connected them with one another to help one another. And Chrissy can tell you approximately how many we have now. It's definitely less than last year. Again, COVID in the last year and a half significantly changed the number of students that were homeschooling and that's fine. We've helped them matriculate back in for the most part. But Chrissy can certainly add to that or answer any other questions you have about that. But we're definitely connected with our homeschool families.
Hi, so we definitely had an increase last year of our homeschool students, as Dr. Cabral just said. And thankfully, they did come back to us. And I, I actually, I take away thankfully because I know parents choose homeschool for different reasons. And it is, you know, our homeschool families, like Dr. Cabral said, are, are wonderful. We actually have meetings once a year annually to discuss any questions they have. I, I use it as an opportunity to connect some families as well. But we had, we did have some families come back to us and some families remained remote, or remained homeschooling. So the exact number I will get for you, but in the past, you know, we had about forty and.
It's usually stable in the forties.
Right.
That's great. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
And forty children, so sometimes there are families that have multiple children. We tend to find that when they get to sometimes middle school, but more school, more so high school. We have a lot of interest in matriculating back into high school. Not just for the, the programming. For example, it's harder for some parents to really be in charge of their child's programming for, say, a foreign language or physics. When they might be in need of a lab. So we do have opportunities where homeschool students can join us for a part of the time. And certainly for MIAA sports, we welcome them, some events. But some of them actually matriculate back into the public school system in high school because it does get a little bit more complex for, for programming.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Great, thank you. Public comment? None? All right.
None at this time.
Superintendent notes, Dr. Cabral?
Thanks. So I am going to ask Chrissy to give sort of a COVID update on our numbers, just an overall. Update on that, so I won't be doing that as a, as a district update. We, we've taken that off the agenda. We certainly can add that if you wish. It was something that we added sort of temporarily for very COVID-specific items. I can certainly, you know, we, we seem to be pretty status quo right now and hopefully it stays that way. And I'll let Chrissy elaborate, but between Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent notes, if anything out of the ordinary comes up, we certainly can tell you about it. Or just add it as an agenda item. We really don't have it, we really don't have a district update at this time because our programming, our curricula, all of that. The schedule is all just as it was pre-COVID, so we don't have as many reports as we do when we had a lot of things that were modified. So I do have one note, however, about food service. I know that we've had a lot of questions about food service, particularly about portion sizes and choices. I will say that we are, it is one of the area, the areas that is still very different than it was pre-COVID. We have a couple of challenges from a management perspective in terms of spacing. So most families know that we endeavor to keep children apart three feet at all times, but definitely while eating. And even more whenever possible, including eating outside. The two things that make that challenging is to separate children in a way that they get their lunches without being in your typical. Lunch line and going through a very enclosed, small space. Sort of a buffet style where people, you know, a lot of restaurants are limiting buffet-style things. Sharing utensils and things like that. So we have, we have resorted to the grab and go that was taking place during COVID. Which means that it really limits the choices for lunch. It's very difficult to put together, for example, certain hot meals that may have been offered in the past, if it's in a grab and go version. With the grab and go, we can take boxes, stack boxes of food and we can separate them to multiple different places in the building. Unfortunately, we can't do that with a lunch line, traditional lunch line, which is only in the cafeteria. The other challenge is point of sale. So we do have a swipe system or the students can put in their identification numbers. It's been great for helping reduce transactions of cash or again, having a lot of interaction between people in close range. The problem is we only have two, I think the most we have in any one school is three points of service. And they're actually mounted in the cafeterias. They're not really a very portable system. So if we were to start selling food again and not be participating in the government program, we don't have a way to. We don't have a way for students to pay for their lunches. But in keeping them separate at the same time. So it is something we hope we can change in the course of the year, but right now we don't have that opportunity. The other thing is, and, and this is the reason I brought it up today and it wasn't on the agenda, is because we just had a meeting with the commissioner yesterday. And, you know, we knew that it was a more regional issue in terms of some of the problems food service has been having. Not just in terms of how we deliver the food to students, but also the supply chain problems. There have been distributors who have had to cancel multiple orders. It has been difficult to get certain food items. And this, we realized after speaking with the commissioner that this is, this is actually statewide. It's not just Eastern and it's not just our region. It's statewide and in fact, it's nationwide. So, you know, we see these, these stories on the news about, you know, shopping early for the holidays. Or how the costs of items are going to go up. Well, that's particularly true with food. And the USDA has extremely, extremely strict regulations of what we can serve. And so there have been a lot of waivers that have been offered by the USDA. The commissioner actually referred to it as a relaxed menu. So I was, I was kind of excited about that. And, and when I talked to our phenomenal food service director, Roberta Tesmanis. She described what that meant. It wasn't quite what I was hoping. What they've done is they've gave out several waivers this year. For example, we have taken advantage of the sodium waiver. Because we weren't able to get the products that they prescribe with the correct sodium portion. So we currently only have one waiver in portion, in, in place, and that's the sodium. We haven't had to request, excuse me, any of the others, like not being able to get milk, which many districts are having. Or other meal pattern ingredient problems. So it, it's sort of a perfect storm of events. Where we're having supply chain issues, we're having issues with vendors. We're, we're kind of fighting for resources truly with, with other places around the country for the same products. And, and it's creating. It's creating a, a problem with products, but also the staffing shortages. So we have talked a great deal about how we're having trouble finding substitutes in all areas. Bus drivers, lunch playground aides, and I've constantly and continuously encouraged parents who want to help to, to sign up for one of those positions. The same is true for food service. So we're currently down twelve employees out of about thirty in our food service department, which is extraordinarily difficult. If anybody is looking for a position, we are actually helping them advertise. Our employees are Whitson's employees, but we are trying to help them secure more of the workforce. There are just people we're finding just don't want in-person work. They, they're looking for online work. And I, you know, I actually was, was watching a news report recently where a woman was being interviewed. And the interviewer was asking her about the, you know, the, the frustration she feels about not being able to get a job. And I'm thinking, I know all of my colleagues are looking for both skilled and trainable staff for many, many different positions. And I can't imagine that there are these job shortages. But she acknowledged that she applied for over three hundred jobs and was not accepted for any of them. Or, or didn't take any of them because none of them were from home. And so we're finding that people are really reticent to get back into the workforce. The jobs are there for people, for, for many reasons, very good reasons, health and otherwise, just cannot be in person. So that is contributing to our shortage. We hope as we're able to keep our numbers down, people will feel more confident coming in. I will let people know that we have some positions that are in less, in contact with less students than others. Food service, for example, we have some where they are working in a kitchen alone or maybe with one other food service staff member that they can separate from. They don't have to be point of service. They don't have to deliver foods to children, food to children. We have many different roles. So we'll take anyone that is willing to help. We certainly are looking to hire. So for that and the other positions I named, please notify Central Office at fifty Oliver Street. And if we hire the particular staff member like a substitute or a custodian or. A lunch playground aide, we're happy to interview and to give an application and an interview. And if not, we will direct them to the Whitsons, Lucinis, or VHS, our vendors for transportation and food service. Because we're in desperate need of, of workforce. So that's, that's the other part of the problem. We are working with Roberta now to try to come up with a letter that, that explains some of these things to families, maybe, and helps them understand. This is not a Whitson's issue. We are overly satisfied with Whitson's and always have been. We've had some really critical situations even pre-COVID and they've always come through for us. They're the first food service that we've had, definitely since I've been here, that has been able to run in the positive in terms of revenue. And that's, that's a big deal. And it's through their efforts of really creating clever menus, good tasting menus, good portion sizes. This year, the portion sizes are a little bit challenged because we offer a grab and go. You know, if the student gets a tray, there are five components to a meal. And if a student gets a tray, everything goes on the tray and they take it. I'm talking about the younger grades. Students sometimes get the port, the five components à la carte, so they may not all be in the box. So for example, if there's an apple or an orange or banana that goes with the meal, it's up to the student whether they take it or not. So typically, there are at least three components in the box. They need to take the other components. But sometimes they're leaving fruit or vegetable behind or bread, for example. And so we definitely encourage kids to, to take the full portion of lunch. But students, every single student is entitled to a lunch and a breakfast. The breakfasts are also portable. They can be kept. Sometimes students are eating them as a snack or they're eating them with their lunch to kind of double up on the portion. Certainly, they can do that, but the, the serving sizes are the definite five component lunch. And so we encourage people to take, to take all of it. And I can answer any questions about food service, but this is the same food service provider that we've had, that people have been. We've gotten great fat feedback and have been very, very satisfied for years. So this is not, I just want to make sure that people know this is not a new provider. This is not somebody who's doing things differently as a business model. This is simply COVID-related and ancillary problems that are also COVID-related in terms of the supply chain. And the workforce. So we're working to try to mitigate as many of these as possible. But basically what you're seeing in other industries is, is hitting us hardest in food service and transportation here now.
Thank you. Anything else for your notes?
No.
Okay. Assistant Superintendent notes, Chrissy?
Hi, good evening. I wanted to start off by informing you, as Dr. Cabral mentioned, about our COVID nineteen numbers at the moment. Just so everyone is aware, to remind you, I am updating the, I have so many tabs open here. Sorry about that. Get the data here. I am updating, we are updating the, the dashboard weekly every Wednesday, but we're trying to do it by five PM. So I think actually this, yesterday I was five oh five, but we're trying to do it by, by that time. So currently, we have been reporting through the dashboard for five weeks. And currently, we have had twelve cases, positive cases overall, ten students and two staff. And you can see the breakdown if you go on the actual website. What I think is really important to note is that out of those ten confirmed, I'm sorry, twelve confirmed cases. We have had to contact trace for, for eleven of them. We have identified one hundred twenty students and staff that have been close contacts.
In school.
In school. And through, with that number, I don't have the actual number, but we have been able to keep kids and staff in school. Through vaccinations and our test and stay program. So it is, it has been wonderful that we have not had large quantities of kids out of school like we did last year. And we are, we are feeling very successful that, that our students are able to be in school. Through the test and stay program, we have not had any positive. Through the test and stay program, we have not had any positive cases. So I think that's really important to note as well. Our nurses have been in contact with the C I C who is offering support through our test and stay program as well as symptomatic testing. We're not doing as much symptomatic testing as we are test and stay. And the, the, it's, it's, I think it's running pretty smoothly. Again, a huge shout out to our nurses who have taken on this task. They are learning new software. They're inputting the data. And it's, it's, they're doing a fabulous job. So thank you to them. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. If you have any questions, I have one more thing to share, but do you have any questions on that? Nope. Okay. Lastly, I just want to share with you as, as you remember, we have implemented No Atom. Our science program K through five. This is the first year our K to two teachers are fully implementing the program. We are doing some professional development with the, with the No Atom group and we have identified nine teachers K to two that are working on sort of like, it's called CHAMP. It's actually not an acronym. Even though it's, it's written out in all caps, it's not an acronym, but it's a model where we are doing some deeper thinking and, and getting into deeper learning when it comes to science instruction. We had our first session over at Moreau Hall and their representatives from all, from all schools. We had our first session on Friday and the, I facilitated with the representative from No Atom and our teachers were, and, and our administrators participated as well. It was such a wonderful event. We had some great discussions about deeper learning. We had wonderful a wonderful launch to the professional development series that we'll be participating in. It is during the school day and it is once a month for six sessions. So our next session, we will actually be going into a classroom to observe a portion of the lesson and coming back and talking and providing some insight as to what we are seeing the kids thinking and what they were doing. And the idea is that these teachers are then going to become the science leaders in the building. And we're really, really excited about, about it. And our teachers, this, the group that we have together is absolutely wonderful. So I just wanted to share that update with you. We have professional development rolling. Our foundations, professional development for K through three is on Monday. Those are just, it's just a forty-five minute session per grade level to have some coaching feedback with our, with our coaches from foundations. And that will be virtual. And we are, we are working on finalizing our schedule for the professional development day on November twelfth. Meeting with the committee on Monday for K to five. So just wanted to give you that update on curriculum and instruction. And with, it's nice to be having these discussions again.
Thank you. Any questions? No? Already. School committee notes. Caroline?
Nothing tonight. Thanks.
Okay. Let's see, Nancy? You're on mute.
Okay, sorry. I'm gonna let Jen take one of the things. I'm gonna take the other one. Last Thursday was the E A retirement party at the country club. A lot of retirees, there are not too many staff people, but totally understandable with covid and everything. But it was a lovely afternoon. Dr. Cabral gave a wonderful speech. Amy Meehan, fabulous. And Cindy Hall, as she had gone out basically two years, you know, twenty twenty. She also made a speech. So really nicely, Holbrook gave a nice speech for Cindy. But anyway, it was very well attended, you know, attended covid attended, I guess I want to say. And it was nice to see familiar faces and just walk around, talk to people and it was, it was very nice. And the E A did a really good job putting it all together. So they're hoping that their next one will be of course in June as back to normal and hopefully as we can get and hope to see as many people as possible then. So it was really nice. And like I said, all the, all the kind words that everybody said are absolutely true and, and just a wonderful afternoon. But that's it for me. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Jackie?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right, Jen?
Um, I have a, I have a lot tonight, actually. Michelle, do you want to talk about marching band? I'll leave that for you.
Well, you can go ahead.
Okay, all right. So first of all, congratulations to the marching band who placed, I believe, first all around and first in music in the N S B A championship last weekend. So congratulations. Great job there. Very exciting. Athletics is, I can't even keep up with the tweets and watching the Hockamock rankings. They're, they're on fire. Every single team, don't quote me on this, but I'm looking at the Hawk rankings right now and every single team is either in first or second place. A lot of the teams have qualified for postseason championships already. And I know the boys and girls cross-country teams, both varsity and junior varsity finished their seasons undefeated, which is just incredible. So I'm glad that, you know, our kids are out there and they're having fun and they're, they're winning because that's always makes it more fun. And, and I know, you know, I think spectatorship at games and meets has been, it's been pretty good. So it's just been really fun for the students to have something to get excited about and to, you know, go to hang out after school and go see their friends playing or go to meet. So just congratulations, everybody. It's, that's really a blast to watch. And then another super fun thing happening at O A was last night, we got to watch the senior project presentation. So Mr. Goldberg, I thank him for inviting us to that. We have thirteen seniors who are taking a, a community service project class at O A, which is a phenomenal offering and one that I know my older kids, at least one of my older kids wishes had been available to her. She's very jealous that these kids are able to do these amazing projects. So all thirteen, you know, were, were able to present what their projects are and, and the, their ability to speak in front of a room and articulate everything that they're going to do for these projects throughout the year. And the scope, variety and ambition of these projects is really impressive. So those students and their families and their teachers should be very proud of the work that they're doing.
And I'll just add to that real quickly. I did tweet the program of the students. It's just a quick maybe thesis of what they're going to be working on. It can kind of give a flavor to people that might want to get an idea of what those are and maybe attend the final presentation. So those are on my Twitter account.
And then I had one more thing through the Eastern University offerings that were put out to staff. Just a great job for putting those opportunities together. I actually took advantage of one of them. A workshop with Jessica Minahan and Sarah Ward. I know that there are several others, you know, their staff from the district who attended as well. And oh my gosh, what time incredibly well spent. So, and I know those two speakers are, you know, we've had one of them in the district. They're very expensive to bring in. So this is a great opportunity, I think, to at a very reasonable price, get people to get that, that time with them and their knowledge is just unbelievable and everything that they said was incredibly topical. So.
We always get great feedback on them and they're, she's Jessica Minahan is, is the person that's been in the district a couple of times. And so we always get great attendance. So we'll have her back as much as we possibly can.
Yeah, yeah, she's really, both her and I'd seen Sarah Ward, the Natick CPAC, which has a very generous budget. They're kind enough to invite members of other CPACs in the community to, when they bring in some of these marquee speakers as well. So I'd seen her there and just the two of them teamed up together is they're really phenomenal. So super valuable. So good job to whoever puts Eastern University together. Fantastic job, really good offerings. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. All right. So next on the agenda, executive session. So I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session. Purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation. And in my opinion, having this discussion in public would be detrimental to the not the bargaining position of the school committee. Do I have a second?
You have three seconds.
All right, roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
Deluca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, great. And then our next meeting before we head off is the twenty eighth, is that what everyone has? October twenty eighth? Six thirty. All right, thank you.